The Cisro Town Council meeting is now in session. Just a reminder, everybody, this is our go-live night for recording and streaming, so if you could all have your mics on and turn slightly low, so it's... they're able to be discerned what we're saying. Appreciate it. If you could all stand for the pledge of allegiance. We've got our act tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing, Ms. Gary, please.
He bounced me. Thank you, Father. Thank you for this day, this time to be together. Thank you for all the people come out just to support us in the community. Father, I pray that you be with our council. Help them make good decisions for the town of Cisro. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gary. If you could please take role?
Certainly. Joe Cox.
President.
Eric Caden.
President.
Dennis Johnson.
President.
Emily Pearson.
We have quorum with four members present. Do we have any additions to the agendas?
I do.
Revisions? All right.
I have resolution dash two zero two five dash one, which is... it follows up the agreement for the purchase of real estate.
Under new business?
It is.
Okay.
And I also have a Baker-Tilly agreement.
Also under new business?
It is. It's for advisory services and agreement for the GeoBond.
Oh, okay.
Is there a number with that, or are we just... there's no number with the Baker-Tilly?
No. Just an agreement.
All right. Anything, any other additions? Department heads, any additions to the agenda?
I have to...
Okay.
...intermissed ladies, setting a date to interview the candidates for fire chief and setting a date to talk about the ISO reading for the...
So, fire can fall under exec session. Then we need to figure out the ISO, if that's a special meeting or exec session. So, we'll get with Aaron on that.
Okay.
And then we'll get it advertised. So, we'll tackle that when we get to it. If there are no other amendments or additions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Send it to Mark Pearson.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Eric Caden.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. All right. Has everyone had an opportunity to look over the prior minutes? From June 12th staff meeting and June 17th Town Council meeting? Any revisions to that? Questions, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments for June 12th staff meeting and June 17th Town Council meeting.
So, Dennis Johnson.
Second. Emily Pearson.
Motion to second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? If you go on the minutes. All right, moving on to approval of claims. Has everybody had an opportunity to look over the claims? Did you get your questions answered by Mr. Bryant?
No, we can talk about it at a...
When we get to engineer report? Okay. If there are no questions, concerns about the claims, I'll entertain a motion to approve the claims.
It is not included in these claims, just...
Pay application 12.
Pay application 12 is...
I didn't see it on there, so, okay.
Okay. Send it to Emily Pearson.
Second, Eric Caden.
Motion to second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please pay the bills, Ms. Gary.
Thank you.
Council committee reports. Ms. Pearson, anything from OTC?
No report.
Okay. EDC report, Robert... So, I think it's just the format that was sent out. We're not actually doing reappointments right now.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Then we're good to go there. I have no updates on EDC.
We'll talk later. I need to get some new guys for you.
Okay. Stormwater management board. Mr. Freeman.
Good evening, Council. Stormwater had a public hearing a week ago. We invited the people that are going to be affected by this drainage project on Morse Meadows. Mr. Bryant gave an outstanding and informative explanation of the project. We had four members, or four people show up, and I think since then, we've got about a total of 10 of questionnaires returned. And based on that information, we were able to send that to the contractor, kind of give an idea of what to expect once it starts opening up. These sections are curved in front of the tolls. Otherwise, I think we're still waiting for some more information to come back. Do we have to put it out for bid?
Yeah, we talked about, we give them about two weeks, a questionnaire back, and then we'll incorporate that information into the bid documents. Go ahead and go out to bid and set a score of work.
So, hopefully next meeting, before next, probably like six months, maybe, have the project finished.
How many homes were impacted? Was it 15 or 30, if you remember?
Forty-five.
Twenty-five. There's three sessions, I believe, that we're going to be working on.
It's from 300 to 670.
Thank you.
There's a chance that the project has been over budgeted. We would not do the middle section. We would not have any breaks there, but it's just... so it'll happen instantly.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Moving along, legal counsel report. Mr. Culp is ill tonight, so he is not present. Cisro Jackson Township Plan Commission Report.
Good evening, Council. I sent this out via email earlier today. I trust anybody knows about that. This is a director's report for June of 2025. Permanent revenue for the month of June this year was $5,470. Raises up to a year-to-date of $23,376. At the same time last year, June of 2024, we were at $10,496 for the month and $25,057 for the year. That's the difference for the month of minus $5,026 and a minus for the year as well of $1,681. We issued a total of 19 building permits for June 2025. Thirteen were for inside the portal limits, no new homes there. We issued another six out in Jackson Township. One of those was for a new home. Estimated cost of these projects committed is $1,105,955. We have a plan commission meeting scheduled for July 9th. It'll be here at Town Hall. We do have items on the agenda. And we also have a BZA meeting scheduled here at the Town Hall as well for July 17th. Both of those meetings have items on the agenda. That's my report, but I believe that Mr. Strong has an update.
Thank you. Mr. Strong?
Good evening, Council.
Hello.
Good evening.
So, in regards to, we had a request from Esri Chums that was originally going to be on the Town Council agenda for July 15th. And so, they would like for not to be on that agenda based upon the fact that they're only on all the information before they would be voting... before the council would vote on their proposal. So, they were asking for the council's approval to move to the April 5th agenda.
August 5th?
Oh, I'm sorry, August 5th.
If... If they want five council members present, it's going to have to be the 19th. That won't be here on the 5th.
So, I guess that's even looking to allow a move off of the July 15th meeting?
Do we need a motion for that, or are we just...
No, I think consensus is fine.
Just consensus. I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
I'm good. I'm good.
And then the other thing, since it was originally scheduled...
You'll... Sorry, you'll get with them about not the 5th, but the 19th?
Yes.
Or if they want to have a conversation on the 5th to bring everybody back up to speed on council and not expect to vote at that time?
Yes, sir. We will fill them out on the information. So, the meeting was originally scheduled for Red Bridge. Knowing that probably won't be as many people in attendance, we will make sure this gets on the list serve out on the Town website to communicate that the meeting will be moved as soon as we have that date. With that being said, the council at this point could move their July 15th meeting back to Town Hall. And we tend to like reserve the Red Bridge community building for August 5th. And we'll look at reserving that for the 19th just to have both of these dates available. So, if the council would like to move back to Town Hall, certainly we'll do that.
I think it's probably a good idea, personally, to keep it at Red Bridge. Everybody good with that?
For the July 15th?
Oh, you're talking about the 15th. I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
So, that's scheduled for Red Bridge. Do we want to leave it there?
If the list serve's going out, I don't see any reason to move it for the 15th if they're not going to be on the agenda.
Okay. So, you'll come back to the Town Council?
Yeah.
Town Hall.
Town Hall. For the 15th.
Okay. We will let Esri Chums know that only four members will be here for the August 5th meeting. Give them the option of the 19th. We'll move back to Town Hall and we'll communicate that via list serve and other mechanisms. So, everybody's aware of that.
Awesome. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along, town engineering report. Mr. Bryant?
Good evening, all. Nothing to report on the water at this point in time in regards to wastewater. However, the drill has contained or done a wastewater plan for about 50 seconds. First, I completely ruined all perspective. We could have a meeting with it tomorrow, a weekly meeting. I think it caught up on a number of things, the status of other things. Wanted to bring up pay at 12 that this submitted. It's imminent. If you must send that in, we're up for recommendation for payment in a total of $647,844.75 split between Reynolds and also Esri Chums. Eric has some questions. This is last night.
So, I'm a pain, I know.
Oh, no.
Oh, don't lie, Mr. Bryant. He's a pain.
I get it.
What was in that? Oh, it wasn't on. Send it in. Sorry about that.
So, where are they putting these road pla... and it's only minimal charge. I understand.
You should email I sent. They did. I sent at seven o'clock this morning. I sent both your questions, two separate emails to them. They did respond. Asked them to respond before the meeting tonight. They did respond to the plates, which I forwarded to you. I think I did a tracking on my phone, but I wasn't able to mention it. But the plates, it's kind of what I suspected. They own, Reynolds owns a number of plates, so they charged Reynolds on that. And then they are actually have to rent some. They don't have enough available. Most of the plates are being used, they say. They have a temporary force made from the headworks that runs over to Oxidation Ditch. It's shallow and basically sitting on the ground. They're very shallow, so they're plating that, or they're running equipment over and back and forth on that. The sites, the sites are very tight. Are you sure, seeing you commit that? There's still driveway.
Okay.
Main driveway between Matt's office and the lower buildings and stuff like that.
Okay.
If they were, I mean, the other offices, they buried that pipe, but then every time they have a pipe crossing, they gotta deal with it. It might have cost them more, so...
No, I mean, I'm good with it. It just was... I was just curious why we get charged for all these road plates, then they go out and rent more road plates?
Right. So, they don't have that on me, that they help the person who's staying around the water, or what they said. And I asked them about what's true relatively minor, but yes, but still they do stick out. And I haven't got a response yet, but they amounted to a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah. So, just a quick question. Being in that industry, I see that those kind of documentation in this being a bot process. I've never... this is the first time I'm seeing a lot of this. Typically, that would not be an itemized line item and just bury another cost.
It's an overhead item.
Correct. So, you don't see it.
But, yeah.
But it's still charged.
You're telling me, so I didn't put it on here. There's a wiper blade. You're telling me we pay for these trucks and we're getting charged for a wiper blade? And again, it's not this particular thing.
I didn't see the wiper blade.
It's just getting nickel and dimed to no end.
It's just the principle of it.
We're paying... it seems like that's just overhead. We're paying for CDL physical, drug screen?
Yeah.
For people that... it doesn't make sense to me, so...
The only logic, well, I can see with that is if that person is going to be on this job 100% of this entire project, then maybe you build a project. But you're right, it's not typical. Of course, again, we don't also, also, they'll never see it. So, it's...
Right.
Transparency is good on one side, and on the other side, like I told Terry, you see how the sausage is made if you really just want the sausage in the oven. So, I asked, I sent an email, so I haven't got an answer yet. I just had to check my email before I do.
And these charges aren't outrageous. It just makes me question everything, right? How deep do you look? And are we getting charged correctly or not? It just seems odd. We pay for the truck to be on site, which should include maintenance, but then we're paying for wiper blades too? And again, it's... that one's 15 bucks.
I know. The numbers are insignificant, but it's the principle. I get it.
Are these, are these vehicles being leased, rented?
I doubt that.
So, they're owned by the companies that come out here and we're paying them for the truck?
Well, the pickup trucks are. They're leasing excavator equipment.
Some they own, some they lease.
Yeah. And then like those...
Regardless, if they own it, they still charge us as if it's real. But that's typical for construction. We just don't normally see it when we bid conventional, you know...
This is much more detailed by line item than anything I've ever seen.
Like I said, I know the...
We don't care if we bid a conventional, because they got, we got a hard number and then they can do their accounting however they want.
Right.
In the end, it's still the same price. And this particular one, it hurts a little bit, because we feel like we're being charged every penny every day of time. Again, it does change the end dollar amount, essentially.
Because it bleeds on the...
I mean, last time, they bought a... I didn't bring it up. They bought a pressure washer on pay application 11. Does the town get to keep the pressure washer when they're done? No, but... Yeah, no, I...
They bought a lot of tools, hands and all, so...
I know. It was like eight or nine grand worth of tools. But so, it... yeah, it's interesting. I'll just say that. I guess...
I agree.
At least they know that we are looking at the details, so hopefully.
We'll ask them tomorrow why they didn't respond and tell them that was the subject of the meeting tonight.
Feel free to throw me under the bus, but I'm paying.
I invited Scott to come to at least one meeting a month to give you a presentation of it. I think I could ask him if you may have a...
Yeah, that's my bad. I'm sorry.
No. No, I, to be honest with you, I think for $19 million there, kind of, once a month, we give enough to make them try to, to answer all their internal questions.
Like you mentioned, the good news is the overtime's corrected.
Sure. So, we get... that would lose... that would be...
We still have $14,000 in overtime to...
That's, that's one per...
For the operations.
Yeah. So, we knew that going... at least I wasn't worried about it.
Yeah, that's unfortunately, if they had to operate their job, you'd... I mean, as every construction truck in the animal's area, that's how their agreements are written, so...
Okay. Well, thank you for looking into it. Sorry it came to you so late. I'm sorry.
It's no bother to me.
I'm being a pain. But it just makes me...
I'm so, I'm so, if you can answer for your part on that.
Well, thank you. It just, it just makes me question everything, so...
So, how do you want to handle pay application 12?
I mean, those are minimal charges. I'll make a motion to approve pay application 12.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll do the second, Dennis Johnson.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's getting paid.
I had an email there for, or to Mr. Lee, who's, you have any questions on that? Good news is the project is moving in pretty well. We're doing good work.
I guess, I know Mr. Lutz mentioned it last time. We have a bid that is a firm bid that we will not go over, but there's a contingency money of a million or a million and a half dollars.
1.4 something.
Somewhere, somewhere in that range. And we were really hoping to be able to leverage that. Have that... realize that savings. And it's being eaten into. And that, that's really... on a project, if the contingency wasn't there, we wouldn't care because we have a number that we're going to that we can't exceed, so... it's an interesting process. Okay. Thank you, Keith.
West Jackson Street, you notice I was simply, you know, it pulled off. We've not really much, there's any work going on this week, but that's up here. We'll be back at it full board next week, starting the concrete work with additional lines.
They got farther than I thought they would by the fourth.
So, thank you, Terry, Keith, Dan, for working with them on getting it all put back together on the west side of Byron Street. That's my doing, so I take responsibility for that, not being there. We ran into an issue, and I made the call. You guys did everything that we asked of you, so thank you very much.
Yeah, they were for that, but by the way, what we found, we need to...
Yes, so...
We need to wait till we make sure we deal with that.
Yep. So, thank you guys very much for, for working that. So, that is, that was on me for not having that done. It was prepared to be done. So, good job with that.
So, hopefully, we'll be done with concrete, we're at length of line. And why shouldn't we be involved with that? We're still working out here. They did, if you looked out here, they did directional drilling for condos going from the hole here to where we're going to set clutch door, reset control panel, what we talked about a couple of years ago, for that panelize. And then also to the building base to the north here, really, we had to change out their electrical service and their contact service in that office to get this to hold to have a middle sidewalk for three or four. So, probably get that down and get everything ready for due. Due, unfortunately, due gas once it's... they won't even start scheduling for the workover until everything is done and ready for the needed work, which at this point is pretty close. Probably the only exception is to put a set panel. And then they have up to 20 days to get it down, so we'll be at the mercy of time. It might be done in one day, but I think we need to...
I guess one other question on the light pads on the north side. The 20-inch diameter pads, those on the east, I think, are 24, even though we spec'd it at 20. Should we ask them to do a change order to 24?
I could see...
On this, on the north side?
We can definitely ask if you want, but then they won't match. So, it's kind of, kind of debatable what would look better by the time we get the sod around it, whether to have them all the same over here in West Jackson or Curry or not.
Because right now, there's some corners that are hanging up for those. Terry, Mr. Strong, I mean, do you guys have thoughts? Council, do you guys have thoughts?
I don't like the corners hanging up.
Yeah, I don't either.
I think the only thing would be, they're staying with the 20 inches. Try to center a little bit better, so we don't have... or a little bit offset with some of the oncoming south side. Could have been better if they would have centered they, but some of them. So, that probably would have been some of the concerns of the corners being so close to the round edges. They won't be the change orders.
Do you think it would be noticeable, a 24 versus a 20?
Oh, you really would, personally. Everybody's got a different opinion, just because you're not going to be walking from both sides of the road at the same time, so... if everybody here at this meeting doesn't repeat this, I don't get it. You'll notice, okay? You won't tell anybody.
I guess, I guess, can we... but I'm afraid, I think Mr. Henry brought it up, but somebody brought it up before. They're probably going to get damaged with weed eating or whatever around those. What do you guys think? Leave it at 20 and ask them to center better?
I mean, personally, I'd ask them to fix it, and if they push back...
I mean, we're only talking on the... so our spec says 20 inches.
Oh, okay. The spec calls 20.
So, on the north side is all I'm talking about. I think the south side is done.
Yeah. I mean, if it's spec'd...
We might run out of crosses. They may. They can grid and do the work up right now, but that's the case of which one's due.
I don't know. Is that what we want to do? That would match the east side, but then north and south doesn't match.
What you think about once you get the sod in there, you're not really going to notice much, so... but with the 24 inch, we'll see more concrete. But your point about maybe being, it can be more careful with weeds, so that will...
Can... I guess I'm thinking 20 inches, but leave it at 20, but ask them to make darn sure they're centering. Do you guys agree with that, once? Boy, we're in a world of hurt by making these type of decisions. What do you guys think?
I mean, I do agree, once the sod grows up around it, my more... my main concern is the damage to the base of it. But again, we don't really have anything to fall back on. If it's spec'd, I mean, it kind of falls...
Well, no. I mean, there might be a change order.
Is, is there a... land base?
I don't think so. I saw it on the website, they did it for...
Well, the only other thing is just simply add something around the base.
That's what I thought it was.
To extend it out past the corners. Whether that be more concrete, whether that be... To extend it out past the corners, whether that be more concrete, whether that be some, some other material.
And I'm just talking about the north side now, where they will put those lights in, they haven't put the pads in yet.
Oh, they have not?
They have not.
Okay.
Well, I know, but we still have three or four like that on the south.
Yeah, there's several on the south side.
I mean, if they're not poured yet, it's gonna be minimal cost on a change order.
We just say we'll go with twenty-four, back to the east side.
I, I, I prefer consistency personally.
Okay, and then maybe we look at how we fix those others.
Yeah.
Well, they did squirt ones down here.
Well, that's because they butt up against the sidewalk, but, so these are out in the, these have grass around all corners, those, the squirt ones are butted up against the sidewalk.
Keith, I think they'd be compromising new twenty-two.
If it's a standard, do you understand what I'm just saying, yeah?
What?
I don't know what standard, it's not a view or just ones two.
Yeah, I don't know what they are.
I know that it's twenty-four, but whether it's twenty-three, I don't know.
Thinking that might be enough to protect the corners. It may not be as noticeable, I'll find out.
I'll just have to walk on the north side of the sidewalk.
Any other questions on Jackson Street here?
No, that's good, I appreciate them working with us too.
I agree, yeah, it's brilliant. Uh, Community Crosses Twenty Twenty Five, Joe signed the notice of receipt with us, we did the fund transfer, we did not, which previously, Joe was signing all the agreements, we'd already signed the agreement notice of award. We delayed the notice of receipt just to make sure some odd thing did not get sent some money. They did, and we sent that to D C Services and waited to get signature back on that, and then we still have to approve the charge, maybe find out what their schedule is to start. So it's Morse landing, Jaffrey landing. Any questions on that?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on any of that?
Any other questions for Mr. Bryant? Nope, I think we're good to go.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thanks.
All right, moving along, nothing under old business, moving to new business, GeoBond.
Um, actually, I believe that's on there because, um, Mr. Lutz asked to, before he left, asked that it stay on the agenda until we, um-
So really, we just-
Well, so we owe her every spot for projects.
Correct, the cost at least.
Well, I mean, any other projects that need to be on there? I mean, I can get with you after this.
I got your email.
We can, we can just estimate what those other costs are before I leave.
Okay.
Or before we leave tonight, do you guys have any other projects that should be on there?
That was pretty comprehensive, I have a question, um, sidewalks, is that something better served by like a C C M G?
I don't think you can do sidewalks with the Community Crossing Canyon, just sidewalks?
Yeah, I think it has to be part of-
Has to be part of, pardon.
It does have to be part of a project, so.
I believe so, I don't think you can just do sidewalks.
Um, I, I just-
Change the rule, which you're changing a lot, but right now it's-
That's true.
Yeah, there's some rough areas along in Pearl Street, um, I'd kinda like to put that on the list, consideration.
Um, just, everybody email me your, I, I got an extensive list from, um, Mr. Hayden today, but just need some cost, but we'll go over that, so.
Okay, sounds good. All right, moving along, resolution number zero seven dash zero one dash two zero two five dash zero one, it's a resolution to purchase real estate.
It is.
Um, we need to-
I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll stick up that motion notice, Johnson.
All right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good to go, we'll get that signed for you after the meeting. And then, just for everybody in the audience, that's real estate related to infrastructure.
There's also, um, then the next one is the agreement that goes with that, the agreement to purchase real estate for your signature, Mr. Cox.
There's a separate one outside of this?
It is.
Okay, do we need to do anything separate on that?
We do, we do.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion allowing me to sign the purchase agreement, or allowing President Cox to sign the purchase agreement?
So moved, Emily Pearson.
Motion.
Second, finish, Watson.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll get it signed for you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
All right, moving along.
The next one is the Baker Tilly agreement, I thought Mr., I didn't realize Mr. Colp wasn't gonna be here, but, um, it's to keep the GeoBond, it's for Baker Tilly's representation for our GeoBond. Um, I asked that you would approve it, kind of based on, contingent on Mr. Colt's approval, though.
Okay.
Just so I don't have to wait two more weeks to-
Sure.
Get it going, so.
Do you have any numbers associated with that?
It's just a engagement letter, related to services, all it says.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the signing of the engagement letter contingent upon Mr. Colt's review and approval for Baker Tilly.
So moved, Emily Pearson.
We have a motion.
Second, finish.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good to go there.
Thank you.
Moving along to the exec session for the fire interviews, um, take a quick look at our calendars here. Anybody opposed to, oh, wait, do you have a date in mind for that?
No, it's whenever everyone can get together, we got three candidates.
Okay, um, they don't, this isn't the one where we actually bring them in though, right?
Yes.
Oh, so, uh-huh? Okay, so we need, then we're gonna need longer than an hour, I assume?
Yeah. Um, maybe not, forty-five minutes probably, because it's only three, and they've kinda been pre-screened-
Okay.
To move the top three forward, so, uh, the council will have their resumes and-
Okay, does, anybody have an injection to six o'clock prior to next week's staff meeting?
Other than maybe an executive session at six o'clock?
Do we have another, we have one before that?
Well, that's, that was gonna be the proposal for additional discussion.
Oh, okay, well, this is an exec session too.
Uh, they can't, no, that, I mean, that would be-
Too much, I mean, we could schedule it at five. If you just wanted to knock it out. But I'll leave that up to you guys.
I mean, at least we have a staff meeting, so we would need three, correct?
Three total meetings, the fire, the ISO.
I, I don't think we should, I don't think, no, three for the interviews.
Oh, you want three individual meetings?
Oh, we can do it all on the same night if we do it right, and it wouldn't have to be like, because we have so much before the staff meeting.
Right, well, that's what I was asking that-
I don't wanna rush them.
I, yeah, I don't wanna rush them.
I, so forty-five minutes or an hour per candidate, I would think is-
Okay, that makes more sense, I was, I thought you said all three in forty-five minutes, I thought that was a little aggressive, but, okay.
No, I, I would say forty-five minutes a candidate, but we can make it an hour.
Okay, all right, so we technically have five sessions.
There is an executive session needed for other topics, and I think that was better suited for before the staff meeting, so we could do one, the first candidate before the town council meeting.
Fifteenth.
On the fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we would have to plan the other two.
Okay, so, for advertising purposes, then, we need an exec session set, executive session scheduled for the, six o'clock prior to the staff meeting.
So that's potential litigation and land purchase?
Yep.
That's, that's the, that's the, that's for the staff meeting.
That's before the staff meeting.
That's when we decided, is that correct?
No.
Before staff meeting, potential litigation and land purchase?
Yes.
That's, um, eight fifteen, uh, no, before the staff meeting.
Better.
Eight ten, at what time does six?
No, 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 the July staff meeting.
Oh, July, I, I'm got July. It's Mr. Strong's fault, he must have been here, so.
It'll be July tenth.
July tenth.
Six P M.
And that's for litigation and purchase of-
Correct.
Okay. At six o'clock, and then one on eight fifteen at six o'clock for potential interview, potential hire.
Oh.
Correct?
Correct.
All right.
Well.
So interview candidate long?
Well, that was, I thought we, I thought that was gonna be seven fifteen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, seven fifteen, yes. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Strong's fault.
So then we would need two more dates to-
Yep.
I mean, do you just wanna do the following Tuesday?
We can't, I, you know, I'm fine, I, I can be here at five o'clock, if we wanna do two on the fifteenth, I want them to be spaced out a lot, it's, it's unfair to the candidates. Or maybe we just schedule two hours, and we do all three in those two hours.
That was what I was thinking.
I think that would probably be the best thing to do.
I think so too.
Okay.
I think so too.
So do the fifteenth?
At five, at five P M, two hours leading up to that council meeting.
All right.
And without estrogen, it should be a lot less taxing of the night, so.
That's seven fifteen?
July fifteenth, starting at five P M, we've got a two hour executive session.
All right, potential hire, and then, um, seven ten, at six o'clock, uh, before the staff meeting, litigation and purchase.
Correct.
All advertised, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, good there, Emily?
Yep.
All right, moving right along, um, that went a lot faster than I thought, comments by citizens, I've got one blue slip up here, Mr. Hunt? Hi, if you wouldn't mind stepping to the podium and stating your name and address, and I apologize, I can see this seventeen sixty, is that Bannaboo?
That's Bamboo.
Bamboo, okay.
I have a property next to the north, my granddaughter lives there, I own that, I live in that, I don't remember it. That bamboo's getting out of hand, I can't see the way out, and it's starting from the front of my driveway.
I'm not even, I, I, I apologize, I'm not even honestly sure, I don't know that many-
It goes to Christian Church.
Okay.
There is, you may be, don't show that bamboo.
So it's Stringtown Pike?
Right.
Seventeen sixty?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Chief, have you had anything, ever looked at that before?
Nah, I don't know, we're officers, went down there, I can be back to Frank, so Frank probably got more about what to be dealt with than I do.
Okay.
I can give you what we came up with, so, uh, I'll try and look at the name of that officer, remember?
Matt Walker.
Matt Walker, uh, we went out there and took a look, uh, as far as zoning ordinance is concerned, I don't really have anything that would be against. Uh, Mr. Walker and I discussed, uh, uh, vision, looking down the road, we determined you could get a full car and pass the bamboo, and we didn't think it was a safety issue either. So, we decided to call it a non-issue at that point.
Okay. Bamboo's a tough one.
Is it in, um, is it in an easement, or?
It does cross into, the, crosses over the building line for sure, but it's not necessarily an easement, it does cross over, is it right away, about four feet by high ball and a half?
I, I guess I'll have to go drive. I'll have to go look at it too, so.
We need to pull one on that driveway, seventeen twenty.
Okay.
It's, he's got some right there, kinda over on the ground. I didn't know him, trying to help him out, on that Bannaboo.
Yeah, the challenge with bamboo is, it doesn't really wanna go away, you know, it's, it's a tough one to eradicate.
I know, that place is wrecked.
Yeah. No, I, we'll go out, we'll do the due diligence on it, I, I can't picture it on top of my head, I'm sure I've seen it, I just can't recall it.
Right, it goes from Christian Church.
Okay, all right, so, give us until next meeting if you don't mind on that, and we'll get out and take a look at it.
All right.
All right, thank you very much. All right, before we wrap up, any other comments by citizens? Ms. Mayor?
Anne Mayor, six two nine Shoreline, first of all, thank you to all you guys and Eric, I really appreciate you standing on top of this construction, this sewer thing, and holding those guys accountable because they'll get you-
Right. I don't think they're trying to do anything.
Well, I know, but come on.
It's just-
They shouldn't take the accountability for the windshield wipers on their vehicles.
Well, I mean, we signed up to this block, thank, thank you, Anne, we signed up for this, for this block, so I, I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong.
But I just like that you question it, I think that's good, you're looking out for it, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm gonna talk about reorganization. There's so much that Cicero, Jackson Township, the zoning, the plan commission, the, um, you know, just, everything seems to have Jacksonville Township Cicero together. So, does Cicero have any accountability to Jacksonville Township residents, since there are things that are combined in this local government?
And we're all Jacksonville Township residents, whether we're in Cicero, Arcadia, Atlanta, so we're part of Jacksonville Township.
Okay, so, what is the holdup with the reorganization? You know, for like thirty-six years, I lived in Knoxville Township, and it is, you're taxed without representation, okay? You don't get a vote on anything at all, that you pay the taxes to cover it all, and all these Jacksonville Township residents that are outside of Cicero have the same thing. And if they're looking at doing things through the state, or whatever, I think it's time to get something moving forward, to get a reorganization visited, you know? Um, I found out, I went to one of the meetings, and, um, I think it was, Mr. Lutz said, well, Arcadia didn't vote for it, and, you know, go look at their town meetings. Well, I found out, Arcadia doesn't have to be part of it, it can be just this rural Jacksonville Township.
Arcadia still gets a vote in it though, or any, all residents in Jacksonville Township do.
Well, they can vote on it, but it, they don't have to be involved in the reorganization if they don't want to be, from what I understood.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, to get it passed, to get it passed, you have to account for those votes?
It goes to the ballot, and any, all Jacksonville Township residents will have a vote on it, Cicero, even if they're not involved in it, they will still have a vote in it.
Okay.
So, the biggest fear, and I'll just speak bluntly, the biggest fear with that is, they're gonna recognize that they're gonna get landlocked if we were to enter in that agreement, and they're immediately gonna start fighting back against that.
What do you mean landlocked, how would they?
Because if we were to reorganize with Jacksonville Township, it's all, it would all essentially become whatever the new entity is, and it would lock their borders, so they would not have any further opportunity for growth, and that's one of their big concerns.
But wouldn't it also protect them from excessive growth?
It would, but everything they've told me at this point, from a government standpoint, is they're not real concerned about it.
Well, I'm, my concern is the county commissioners getting control of all the citizens outside of Cicero proper.
Sure, and that, that's, that's where the township-
That's a major concern.
That's where the township reform comes into play, I have a meeting with Elena Schonkweiler, the state representative, next week, who's gonna be sponsoring that bill, and then the week of the twenty-eighth, I have a meeting with Debbie Driscoll, um, who's the I T A, the Indiana Township Association representative, so I can get the facts from them.
Several of us had a, a sit-down meeting with Speaker Houston a couple of Fridays ago as well, and that was a topic of discussion, and, so.
I just felt wanted to-
We're, we're not sitting here doing nothing.
I, I know, I know, I know, I just thought it would help if you heard one, one of the little old citizens' concerns, you know? And it doesn't, I mean, I'm not in Jacksonville, I'm in Cicero, so, I don't have to pay thousands of dollars to hook up to sewer and, you know.
A reorg won't change that, by the way, the reorg does not supersede the utility district, that won't change a thing with the utility district, they'll still have all their rights.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
But the county commissioners would still have more say-
Wouldn't change it.
In the township, if there's no reorganization.
Uh, that, right, right now, that's, that's not a correct statement.
Oh, okay, well, that's what I-
That's not a correct statement, so, that's, it's speculation, and we have to, we have to make decisions based on hard facts.
Well, no, we-
So we are, we are looking at, and we're speaking with the right people to try to, to frame this, to make sure that we, when I say we, Jacksonville Township, Cicero, Arcadia, Atlanta, we're a family up here, then we are all protected.
Okay, well, and I, I guess that's just, I just wanted to make sure, like, on the record, that everybody's looking out after each other. You know, that, we know that, you know, nothing's in the hard stone yet, with the state doing what they might do, but-
The bill hasn't even been created, Elena- The bill hasn't even been created. Elena assured me it's not going to be anything like the bomb that was Representative Engelman's bill. She's actually open to input on it, so I, that was just through the initial setting the meeting conversation. So, I don't know what it's going to entail at this point. I was actually hoping to meet with Debbie Driscoll prior to meeting with Elena, but it just worked out this way because of vacations and holidays and stuff.
Yeah.
But I'm in the process of gathering the facts. I've been having discussions with, you know, the people that are theoretically in the know. So far, everybody has told me, and everybody Aaron's spoken to, has told him that it's unlikely to affect Jackson Township, but we're still trying to get to the bottom of it.
Okay. Well, but regardless, Jackson Township still doesn't have a vote.
Correct. And the annexation would also accomplish that. The annexation we've been talking about recently is just the start. We would eventually like to get that all in, and once it is become Cicero Incorporated, if we accomplish the annexation, then everybody, there would be new districts formed, there would be representation for those districts, it would accomplish the same end goal.
I guess I missed out, because I've lived so many years without his voice.
Sure.
You know, I feel for the people in Jackson Township.
Yep, and we're absolutely empathetic too. I mean, we live up here as well, but like Eric said, we have to, we have to work off of facts, and we're trying to gather those right now.
Well, and just as government takes so long, this has been talked about for, what, a year and a half, two years? So, it's like, okay, what's an update, so?
Sure.
You know, if you keep us informed, we appreciate it.
Sure. Yep, the information will filter out, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do.
Camilla?
Let me make sure I turn that on. I did appreciate the question that you asked, and I made a post today, some of you may have seen it, where I supported reorg over annexation, and I wanted to explain why. Annexation does not protect many of us out where we are, and it certainly does not give us a vote. And that's really what we need, was a development that is no doubt coming. We've all talked about it, we're not naive to it, we understand it's happening, but we deserve, as Jackson Township residents, to have a vote.
So his answer wasn't no?
My answer was no. My answer is we're not going to take a leap of faith based on speculation. Your post today talked about speculation a lot with speculative growth, but that's what this reorg is as well.
But I, so then my next question is, if you're going forward with annexation, would you commit to not approve any development out in the area until annexation proves itself to actually represent the people out there?
Let me ask you this, and I'll answer that question, but how does annexation not give representation out there? It becomes incorporated.
Well, does it represent me? I'm not going to be annexed in, and I'm at 246, so I have no representation.
In the initial annexation to set the block was the goal. We're trying to do a progressive annexation.
How long is that going to take? And my question is, will you stop development or approving any development until you annex that entire area, or whatever area you choose to annex? I mean, that's a fair question, isn't it? I live out there.
It's a fair question, but that's a pretty blanket question, because it depends on the type of development. I'm not going to say no to that, and frankly, it's not necessarily up to us. The plan commission can approve stuff depending on what type of development is, without ever coming to us.
They can, but again, you're going to be presented with estridge, which went through two planning department meetings.
Right.
And my understanding is, is that it comes before you, and my question to the board is, we're begging you for help. We're begging you for help. Will you either do some kind of, you know, spend some money to do some kind of investigation into reorg, or will you commit to stopping development until the whole process of annexation takes place?
I'm-
That's what I'm asking you. Because we're all the ones that will pay the cost for whatever you all, who live in Cicero, vote on. That is a fact. None of us who live out in Jackson Township have a voice, and my only voice is to ask you if you will commit to one of those two things, in an effort to help the constituents who are faced with developing growth because of a utility district.
Alright.
That is why we're all here, is because of that utility district.
Sure. And I can't give a, that-
That's my-
I just, I can't do that.
So, so annexation, so let's just play this out. If we were to annex out there, districts would be readjusted, so it is a possibility to have a person sit in the council from out in that area, if there was somebody that wanted to get involved. Typically, people don't want to get involved. If somebody wants to get involved. If that person were to sit in that seat that Mr. Cox is sitting in as president, at the right time, when they get to nominate, he gets to nominate X number of plan commission members himself. So, you could do that. And then you could, well, not everybody does. So then, you could also participate in other plan commission members. So to me, that's an avenue. To me, they're separate, we've talked about it, they're separate actions. One is more immediate, potentially more immediate than a reorganization than the other. And in my decisions, I try to look out, I busted my tail trying to figure out this utility district. We all have, and how to support the people out there.
And so have, to be fair, so have I.
I know you have.
So, I'm asking, as a resident, who is also busting her butt, to figure out all of this mess that is coming our way, and I do it unpaid, unelected, time after time after time, and I'm to the point where I'm asking you to either go with the annexation, if that's what you want to do, but commit to not approving any development until you do. Until it goes through. And if you can't do that, then commit to a portion of the thirty to forty thousand dollars that it would take to simply do a study to see if reorg is viable. Maybe we get to the end of that and we decide reorg isn't viable. But none of us know, sitting here, it is speculative, because no one's willing to do a study. And that's what I'm asking. So what I'm hearing you say right now is you're not willing to do that. I understand that, I just had to ask it on the record. Thank you.
So is your position zero, zero approval of anything out in Jackson Township, and just sit there and try to figure out what happens next?
Uh, no, I'm not sitting here-
That's what I just took from this conversation.
I'm going, okay, I'm going to take a deep breath, because that's a little bit insulting, Eric. I have gone to all of you, I have researched, I have been to so many meetings in Hamilton County, and it's not even funny. So, I am not doing nothing, but I am to the point, I am to the point, where because I understand my neighbors' needs, because I talk to them, we're all aware that development's coming. We want to be part of the process, and we'll try to figure out how to do that. And right now, all we have are you all, and it's going to be project after project after project after, we're exhausted. We're exhausted.
What have we done that has zapped the confidence in us? We said no to Lennar. I told you before it ever went to a vote that it wasn't going to happen, but you still rallied the troops knowing it wasn't going to happen. Same with the wastewater, or same with the transfer station. You knew going into that meeting it was never going to happen, because I'm an open book. I told you that.
Joe, I know what you said, but I also know that you're working with the county.
We, no, we're not working with the county on annexation. They agreed to take care of the roads should we annex out that direction, and that's the end of the conversation with the county.
Okay.
I know you guys think everybody's against you, but we're not. We are not.
But I'm asking you, that's why I'm asking for this. It's what, we're willing to say, we'll wait for annexation. That's why I'm asking, if we wait for annexation, will you make the commitment to not have any development until that process is finished?
No.
And if not, why? Why not?
Because, that's a broad blanket statement. It's not fair to the developers trying to find it either. I mean, we have to consider everybody.
Let me tell you something. Sheridan is doing that, and they're getting help from the county for it.
Okay.
But you know what? There's a lot more admiration right now for that kind of stance than this kind of stance today.
But because, because we chose to take a different tack, and mind you, it was your request to annex from the beginning. You guys keep pivoting on us. First it's annex, then not annex.
Wait a minute, wait back when, and we got four away from thirty-one, and you all pulled the plug. So don't even come to me about that annexation.
And then I went back to the county to try to make it work financially.
But we would have had annexation done if y'all hadn't pulled the plug two years ago, and that is a fact.
At what cost?
Camilla, you-
You have no idea what the cost was.
Camilla, this council has never pulled the plug.
We've never pulled the plug on anything.
Okay, well, that's not what I was told.
By who?
I won't say.
We backed off of it, because there was a fifteen million dollar shortfall.
And so now you're really working with the county to help with that?
No. Alls we did was ask them to keep the roads, and they keep the motor vehicle tax, because it's based on population, so they get a higher percentage of revenue from that. That's their motivation.
What my recommendation would be to you all is make sure that you have a, know that you can accommodate the roads in that six-month period, because that six-month period that allows them to pull out will be triggered when you do not do what they ask, because there is a quid pro quo with everything, everything that has happened with Jackson Township in Baker's Corner. And that is also a fact. That is my experience. I understand you all don't have that experience. You don't live where I live. I had to ask the question on behalf of the residents who live out there. I do appreciate you all, and understand your position, and I understand that you live in Cicero. I understand, my problem isn't your problem. I do understand that, and I appreciate the help that you've attempted to give. We're just at a crossroads right now, where we need action, and we need it fast, really fast. We needed it two years ago. We needed it a year ago. We needed it six months ago, but we definitely need it today.
And we're trying to take action.
Appreciate that.
So, but I will say, annexation is voluntary, and if you don't want us to annex up there, we don't have to. Well, thank you. Anybody else?
Can I?
Yeah, come on.
Wasn't planning to, but I'm just trying to. Am I supposed to do it?
You know, Rod and Cook, and yeah.
Um, I just want to clarify something about the whole reorg. First of all, I know that we have talked about it, and there were attorneys involved in all of that, but we never did do the fiscal analysis to see what it could look like. And I just feel like, I know you're going to talk to Debbie, I know you're going to talk to Todd, I know you're going to talk to Elena, I've, uh-
I'm not going to talk to Todd. Oh, you're talking about Todd Hughes. Okay, we already have, yeah.
I've done all of that, and they say the right things. My concern is the red flag of the media meeting that took place in Westfield after they said that there really be township reform. So, I just want to put that out there. I know what they can say, but at the twelfth hour, it happened with Dean Lelby, it can happen to him, it can happen to local townships. They can say, they can say, they can say, at the twelfth hour, who are the people out there? So, that's a big concern of mine. I feel like if we could do reorg, it just puts the control. Like you said, we're all one community. We all go to the same schools, you know, we are one community, and it's not just for development, which we're not against, it's also, I mean, what if it could be better for everybody? It could be. If you think about, like, Cicero Parks, Cicero Parks are beautiful, but Cicero's running out of park grants. What could Jimmy Hunter do in Atlanta Parks and Arcadia Parks? It just, it could be better, and that's kind of why I want to pursue this reorg. So, I just want you all to know, also, annexation does not stop Sheridan. Sheridan has the council that is supportive of us, but they're not going to be there forever, and they can hop over thirty-one and annex over this side of thirty-one. I just want you guys to know that. And my next steps are, I just plan to do a mailer to every person that lives in Jackson Township, invite them to come to a meeting, and we'll just talk about reorg. Talk about it, and answer questions, and that way the public can know, and they can come to their respective councilor councils and love their issues, so. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chorley. Yep.
And I just want to point out, the reorganization was brought up way, way before the state ever talked about getting rid of township.
Been involved the whole time.
It's been going on for a long time.
And I've been involved the whole time.
I wouldn't have, I'm just, want to point it out, that it's not just due to what the state might do, it's due-
No, I understand, but that's how it was positioned last time, a couple meetings ago, that, you know, this is happening, when in fact, there is no guarantee this is happening.
Well, like Camilla said, it's just getting more urgent than it was a couple years ago, because of what could happen, because of what the state could do. But it's been going on for longer than the state ever said, oh, you might get rid of townships.
I mean, it's come up in the last six legislative sessions.
Well, I suppose. I hadn't heard about it until just now, so, and it sounds like, I don't know. But I just want to point that out, it's been going on for longer than that.
Sure, sure. And I, it's a monumental shift in government. We're talking about a monumental shift in how the government is structured in northern Hamilton County. We're not taking it lightly. I know you guys think, we're not saying no, we're not shutting the door on it.
No.
What we're saying is we're not going to expedite the timeline. We understand the need to do it. It's why we ran. I mean-
I know, I know, and we appreciate it. We just have to protect each other from the wolves.
One hundred percent, and we're trying to do that.
You know?
But at the same time, not get ourselves in a bad situation as well, so rest assured, the door's not shut. It just may not go on the timeline that you want it to go on, you know?
Just don't do it too late.
Right, I mean, I'm going through it all right now. I can assure you that.
Can I say one more thing? Want to be around there?
Yes, you do. Just out of principle, Robin, I'm making you come to the podium.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair. Reorg would solve all of our ISO issues, because the amount of works on staff, so it's not as great.
And like someone pointed out, she's putting herself out of work if this is done.
I get it. Anyone else? It's alright, just state your name and your address.
Gerald Bemeyer, twenty-eight forty East, two hundred and thirty-sixth Street. Once we emphasize my agreement with what's considered a reorg, and suggest to you with the information we got from the new president of the shared board, council, that's a huge amount of information, somebody who just did it, and actually protected themselves from things from Westfield. That whole situation, buying dump trucks, adding to the police, I mean, all the reasons of doing that, and what the county's saying, the road, the road can't afford it, what they're saying up here, can't afford it, can't reorg. The county doesn't want you to, doesn't want anybody to, so they can come in and do, this statement was obvious, and reiterating that, please, consider what Sheridan has done, the challenges they went through, going from, and present those kinds of information, then when you think about the future of what Cicero must be, slash Jackson Township might go to at current.
Thank you.
It's a whole heart. And this is brand new for you. You haven't been through this before, I get that, but it's awesome to me to see what Sheridan did. Huge learning, huge learning.
Huge.
And so use that information, please.
And a very different reorg over there.
I know it's different here, because you've got three other cities.
Right.
I get that, two other cities.
They didn't have control of their planning, we do.
Exactly.
So there are differences.
So it's challenging.
And I'll tell you, one of my biggest fears, and I'll just share this with everybody, one of my biggest fears with reorg and hesitation is if it goes to the ballot and fails, then it just opens up the floodgate, and we have really no recourse. We can rush to annex, to try to annex again, but that's why we're putting the annexation in play, because you can do them together, and one doesn't affect the other. So we're trying to advance something that gets an initial block set, while not closing the door on that.
Deep breaths. Just go further and then-
We don't have the option to work on a motion, unfortunately. We've got fiscal responsibilities that we have to uphold.
Oh, absolutely. And I'm beginning to want you to go to that, go to the course. Again, seeing what Sheridan did, and how it's improved their financial position, and gives them control.
I do encourage you to take a look at their books, though. They should be public records, and look at how their liabilities are structured. A lot of it is lease, a lot of it is short-term liability, it's not asset, they're not assets being brought to the town.
To me, that's lizard. I mean, that's having run a business slash corporation slash city. You have to be aware of, if federal government do that, that's another conversation, but just take that information, and exercise it, and add it to what you've known, what you're learning. With a big caveat, it's my opinion, not fully what the county's telling you.
The county's not telling us anything. I know somebody suggested that the county's been courting it. It was me that went to the county in December about that roads agreement, and then I didn't have another conversation with the county until last Friday, two Fridays ago? and then I didn't have another conversation with the county until last Friday, two Fridays ago. It was all done through Mr. Culp and Connor Sullivan, their lawyers. There's no courting going on. We're not, we're not sitting down at negotiation tables, nothing. We have a quarterly meeting with the county at Red Bridge, um, what, on Friday mornings, once a quarter. Um, we get updated by their highway department, you know?
Parks.
Parks, everything that's going on. And that was literally, and, and that wasn't even a topic of conversation out there because after December, it was never discussed again except by our lawyers. We were just waiting for the documents to come out. So there's not negotiations of any kind going on with the county. Oh.
Mr. Hall, I mean, you can probably chime in as well here, but it's a benefit to the county.
They're going to keep quiet.
Is it? Okay. Well, sorry to put you on the spot. So the county actually, correct my statement if I'm wrong, the county with that amount of road actually gets additional funding than what the town would get, which makes it easier to make those road improvements out in that area.
And the county can do it cheaper. We have the equipment, we have the staff, and we should do it a lot less expensive.
But there is...
There is no negotiation going on between the county and the Cicero Town Council. None.
Unequivocally, no negotiations going on, though. And, and my personal opinion is the only way we were even getting that agreement through was the particular roads we did. If we tried to get them to take in the whole area, and, and you can maybe speak, I don't think it was going to happen at that point. Yeah. So we, we were trying to do what we could and accomplish what we could in a reasonable manner that we thought would fly, and it, it ended up flying. So to that extent, I mean, the annexation is still the other portion of that. And if the annexation doesn't happen, then, then it's null and void. So...
That, that agreement, local, inter-local, is null and void.
Yeah.
Well, again, the experience that Sheridan should teach everybody some of the aspects of what it can look like, and every township slash area is different, I get that. But use that information too. You couldn't get that anywhere. And just add that to your reorg, I guess, please.
Agree, and commend Sheridan for taking it, and taking their own future into their own hands. We're in a little different situation, and I think time will tell what it really looks like over there. What their tax rates do. Maybe they don't change. We, we don't know. But in five years, it'll be a good case study, I'm sure, one way or the other, to, to evaluate.
The key for me is they have control over their own destiny. And that's the reason to do it.
So me being a Jackson Township resident that lives in Cicero, but a Jackson Township resident, I feel that we still have that same control of our own destiny. That's, that's me being a Jackson Township resident.
I can tell you, if zoning ever became a topic and there was a threat of losing zoning that was imminent, we would make whatever move necessary to make sure that didn't happen. There will be no negotiation, and I, I will put this on record, there will be no negotiation in which we give up zoning.
Good, good.
Whatsoever. Bottom line. Will not happen under this council.
That's on record and that's so.
Right.
I mean, I'm serious. It's a big deal. I just moved out here nine years ago. I've moved out Kennedy Gardens in the last five years, and I haven't reached this 50 years.
Sure.
Only because it really affected me. Down in Hamilton, you might as well go listen, see what's going on. So I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate you, uh, taking part in it. Thank you very much.
Gerald Denmeyer.
Thank you.
2840 East 236th.
2840?
Yes. I'm not very ready to just paint it today.
Nice.
It is not open, it's not open. You've already had people using it like an emergency.
So we did get a little, the, the Friday meeting I talked about from the highway department, obviously NDOT's project is out there, but what's been relayed to the county is we're looking at September for an opening. Is that, can you confirm that, Mr. Hall? Okay.
More about the bridge, I mean.
I, I, I think that's what they were talking about.
No, I thought the bridge was into the month.
But then they were going to close it again.
Yeah, they're closing it again.
From, from, okay, so my understanding, and I'm probably wrong, the bridge was opening to Anthony sometime around the end of the month. That section beyond west of Anthony to 31 is closed through September.
That's my understanding as well.
That was my understanding, but I could, it would be much better suited to go to the highway department, get that answer.
I mean, I don't care about that section. It's quiet. I can hear the owls.
Right.
It's still rolling. Keep it closed for the night. The bridge, I need for the tractor trailer into the fourth, and for bridges open, so send me five miles of 100 acres.
Sure.
I, I don't know that that'll be open for the fourth.
Somebody out there sent it.
It, well, I, I don't remember. I'd have to go back in my notes, and I don't have them.
Thank you very much.
Things were looking too positive, so they went ahead and closed 226 too, just to make sure they could keep us here.
I see that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing? Sorry, I, I just came up here. I just wanted to address your statement, Eric. I appreciate that you're a Jackson Township resident. I think the difference between the unincorporated areas and the incorporated areas is that those of us that live in the unincorporated areas do not feel like we have control because we have the utility district that was rough on us. And it was funded by the county. Um, county council members funded it, county commissioners voted on it. The county commissioners are the utility district board. They are the drainage board. So if you live in the unincorporated areas, you don't feel like you have a lot of control right now because you're looking at a big fat bill at the worst-case scenario. Best-case scenario, you now have a government entity that comes on your property to inspect, and you pay a fee for that privilege. So we don't have the control. We're stuck. And that's the difference. And to Gerald's point, and I do appreciate this, you have one shot to get it right. One shot, that's it.
And that's why we're taking it so seriously.
Understood, but you're about to get run over and not have an opportunity to do anything. And that's how we're feeling out there. Maybe we're wrong, and maybe you're right. I'm just telling you how we're feeling, and that's why I think you're hearing what you're hearing tonight. Because we are feeling pretty desperate and concerned. And it's because we've been dealing with two and a half to three years of this. And that's not what I want.
So Kimberly, on the record, I'm, I'm, I'm having trouble parsing through all the information I'm getting. Is the utility district the number one issue from Jackson Township residents' perspective? And being forced to hook up to that?
The utility district, how do I answer this? And if you ask the average person who was living in their home not realizing they're in a utility district, they're going to give you 10 reasons why they don't want development, right? They're going to say they don't want neighbors, they don't want, you know, they want their country atmosphere, whatever that happens to be. Everybody has their own idea of what their utopia is, right? And most people moved out in Northern Hamilton County in the rural areas because of the rural. The utility district is my number one issue because I went to meetings in the very beginning because it was very clear, very early on, that they need 1,100 hookups. They're not getting them any longer on the west side of 31. They're just not. Sheridan has shut them out right now. Maybe they'll get some, pick up some here and there through the years, but they're not getting that right now. And right now, the east side is the only play. And for better or for worse, it is funded by companies. That utility district is in debt right now. And it continues to be funded with the assumption that they're going to be rate payers. Well, we're not stupid out where we live. We know the rate payers are coming from us. They're not coming from Cicero because y'all have your own utilities. They're coming from us. And that is why that is the number one problem, the number one issue for me. And I would say that every other development or issue hinges on that overriding thing. It's unfortunate that Hamilton County put us all in that box. It's absolutely unfortunate. It's criminal, if you ask me. It's absolutely criminal, but they did it, and now we have to deal with it. And that's why I'm hoping you guys, because you're all we've got.
So if there is a solution that adds a level of protection to the existing homes out there, that addresses your perspective of the people out in that area?
No, I'm not going to say that because as I told you, there are many reasons that people have for not wanting development. And as you just said, we have to look at project by project and see what those projects are. If you want to put a trash waste for transportation in my backyard, no, thank you. I'm going to fight tooth and nail for that. So I can't address that in that way. But I am telling you that we are feeling pretty desperate. And to answer your question, that utility district has put us all in bums, all of us.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Motion to second, on favor.
Aye.
Posed. Thank you very much.